Let the role reflect that Trish Rogers and Jeff Redman are not attendants. All other members are present. The meeting was properly noticed. The next thing on the agenda, item number five, is election of board officers. So the first thing we'll do is entertain nominations for board officers.
I'd like to move that we present a slate of officers. Second.
Any other discussion? A motion by John Hugh to present a slate of officers, a second by David Olson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now entertain, uh...
I'd like to move a slate of officer of Howard Krujki as board president, Kirk Lixit as board vice president, Jeff Redman as board clerk, Scott Degrows as board treasurer.
Second. The motion for a slate of officers. Howard Krujki, president. Kirk Lixit, vice president. Jeff Redman, clerk. Scott Degrows, treasurer. And a second. So a motion by John Hugh. Second by David Olson.
You have to ask for any other slates.
Any other nominations for slates of officers? Any other discussion?
Move to close.
Second. We're gonna, uh, motion, we need a vote on the slate for just closing nominations. Okay. I have a motion to close nominations by John Hugh and seconded by David Olson. All those in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Now you can vote on the officers.
Alright. Now, uh, entertain, um, just to vote. Just to vote. Okay. Alright, uh... All those in favor of the slate of officers that I previously indicated, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carried unanimously. And with that, I will turn it over to our newly elected president, Howard Krujki.
Uh, thank you to the board for your continued support. So, appreciate that. Congratulations to all others on the board, so... Appreciate your hard work. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is our public comment. Do we have any sign up? Do we have anybody with public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is our highlight on you. Uh, starting with our Destination Imagination presentation by our middle school students, uh, with middle school counselor Kat Rosmer and fifth grade teacher Carrie Bean. Welcome.
Alright. My name is Lauren and we today, tonight, we are gonna be sharing with you a little piece of what DI was like for us this year. Destination Imagination. The Destination Imagination symbol is a box and a sphere. The reason it's box and a sphere is because you wanna think outside the box. The sphere doesn't fit inside a box, so you need to think outside of it. What is DI? DI is a program where you are, you are creative and you use your imagination to solve problems as a group. You work on a main challenge throughout the year and perform at a competition called regionals. If you qualify, you move on to state. And then if you qualify at state and you would move on to levels throughout the year, you would also do instant challenges. They help build teamwork and get used to stopping and listening to others' ideas. The instant challenge you do at practice once a week will never be the same. You have certain materials that you can use in certain amount of time when then hands off. One, two, three, four. One, two, one, two, one, two, one, two, one, two, one, two, one.
Mr. Cooley's way in the back, he wants them over.
Alright, I want all the ones to come over here and all the twos to come over here.
Yours are, these are our cereals.
Okay. First, you have to set your materials down. Until we say start, um, it will be... You can't touch the materials until we say start, otherwise it will deduct points. We are keeping track of your score just like they would in a real game.
Keep an eye on them, hey?
Um, agent, work together and listen to others' ideas in order to complete the challenge. If you argue and shout, that would also deduct points. You will only have five minutes to make the towers using only ten sheets of papers and two minutes to practice your presentation. You are looking for the tallest building and you will present it to us, the building company, to see if we will buy your building. We will be judged on the creativity of your structure, the height of your sh- structure, and your teamwork. Remember, you will be only given ten sheets of paper and you cannot touch the materials until we say start. When the timer runs up, hands off, no matter what. And then you will be given two minutes to present. Now if you present, so come around and measure with the measuring tape. Have fun.
So we don't get tape or anything, just paper?
Did we get go?
Just paper, that's all we get to use?
Just paper.
Just paper.
Can you listen first, then please?
Ready?
The height and structure.
Go!
Creative.
Two minutes.
Three minutes forty-five seconds.
Three minutes forty-five seconds. Left or so far in? Left, okay.
Okay, here all filled. I don't get it. I know. How much time do we have?
Can we rip the paper?
What? How much for our win? Cause eighth grade had the longest, biggest tower that I know of. So you can do some other tabs the way you want. Cause you know the eighth grade had a tower that was almost six foot high. We did this there, he's having two right there.
Yeah, uh, how are you gonna tell us? You're selling it, Alex, you gotta think of a skit. A creative skit. We're like, you're constructing.
How would we're creating them? Do you think you have this? Cause there was a camera leak. I'm a camera snob.
Yeah, we had toast on the top.
To the building company, alright. So, yeah.
You know you have to say that to us. Remember, you guys have to create a skit to sell your buildings to us. We're really, we want to buy your buildings.
Don't!
Yes it is, yes it is. It's a telescoping, so we will have commercial space, commercial space. Remember, you said we're not gonna do it.
Count that kiss, love, everybody! Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
He's not touching it. He's looking outside the box. This is fear.
Alright, let's measure.
He's part of the building. And they were done.
You have two minutes to present your tower to the team.
Four after measurement during.
You can do it right there.
Somebody else has something to say.
I just don't wanna touch it.
Forty-four. When Hoser does this, he's definitely, he has got to have it standing up before they measure us. Don't touch it.
Are you need to present that?
Can we tell us what they? This is our concept building for DI Square. It's a multipurpose building. The first seven floors are for commercial, or not from the river. The next fourteen floors are all office space. And then the top area with this wonderful wide open windows that faces the unique view of downtown, it will all be... Real stable. Will be a living space, penthouse living with, uh, windows that look out over the lake. Cause I heard telescoping. So, our tower is a telescoping design based on the flowering lotus of the eastern Asian jungles. And what we've learned from the lotus flower is that it's the most green and environmentally flower of all flowers in the botanical genre. So you see, during a hurricane, this whole tower can telescope down into itself to protect its residents from the sheer catastrophe that open hell in our planet experiences. And in the sunny weather, it reglooms and blossoms. And during the rainy season, which this tower is best at, it collects all the rainwaters in the segments here to wash itself, to provide running water for everything within the building and all the residents. And it actually has so much water pressure coming down, it generates its own electricity, creating a zero carbon footprint on our environment.
Alright, let's measure.
Forty-three. Did you ask them if it's... Well, that's, if that's in the non-telescopic region, Florida.
Yeah, we didn't pull it out.
Stop telescope.
You guys have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, this was very creative how they explained it. So I say...
Five.
Five out of five. Well, the thing is, I'm, it was a very good skit. I'm wondering how the other members participated in this skit.
We give them like you did. You have, you have to be smart enough to put your smartest person in there. Please listen. Everyone has a role. Our role is to assemble, his job was to describe it, so we had a role. He's our marketer. Yeah. His role was also his opinions on our building.
Nicked off some points because he didn't participate.
I didn't do it.
Half of the time! That's throwing. Building got also the dog's point. They got a very tall building.
We do what?
Throwing things at other buildings.
No, we're contributing to their building project. They were taxing each other.
If you do fingerprint analysis on that, I think you'll find Mr. Hugh.
Had a penny stolen from him by this team.
Alright. Alright, thank you guys for participating.
Our might stay up the whole night. You got some gum, that's dropped over there. The board members have candy. I'm gonna visit that and hit one. Promotion to remove the, uh, the, the landscape light that is...
The eyesore over there.
Actually, it does serve a pretty good purpose. You can at least leave... Just reminder that we are being recorded.
Why DI is fun? Answers from SEC DI students. Emily, what do you, why do you think DI is fun?
I think it's fun because you can make new friends and you can share facts and know what they are saying.
Amber, why do you think it is fun?
DI is really fun because you can use your creativity to create new things.
I think DI is really fun because you can use your imagination and build off of others' ideas to make one big great idea.
Lauren, why do you think DI is fun?
DI is really fun because you get to be who you are and see what talents other people have.
Hallie, why do you think DI is fun?
Actually, I've said something, but Tegan has, has already, why do you think DI is fun?
Me? Do I have to speak? It's alright, Tegan. I like the answer to chal- challenges that you do because some are challenging.
Emily, why do you think DI is fun?
Uh, that's the reason why I think it's fun because it challenges you in different ways.
Why DI is a good, good free education. You build teamwork and cooperation skills. Learn how to listen to other people's ideas. You can show them little talents and skills that you might not be able to practice or do in school. Depending on what calendar you chose, you get to practice in that school area and learn more about the skill. You, you use your imagination in a way. Meet new friends and learn how to work with people you don't know. You learn to use your creativity and build out the ideas by working with other people. Some of the twenty seventeen to eighteen challenges. Change of tune. Drop zone. Inside impact. Unlikely attraction. Treasure. Instant challenge. Friends everywhere. Maze crazes. These are some pictures from when we were at, um, regionals. Okay, so, the picture of Chewbacca is a mask, um, the, the maze crazers did for their skit. It's Chewbacca. We did a Star Wars theme and our group had very, a lot of fun doing it and we had lots of fun chaun- and lots of challenging stuff. And it's an impression of Star Wars, so... This is the finals video. Globes.
This link will be your time to showcase your skills on a global stage and the challenges are only part of what makes global finals an unforgettable experience. You'll make memories that last a lifetime with new friends from around the world. You could expect the unexpected. In four days, packed with celebrations, innovative technologies, team building workshops, inspiring speakers, in training, parties, fun activities for the entire family, and much more. So, are you ready for the world's largest celebration of creativity?
Instant challenge.
Hi, I'm Shannon James.
And hi, I'm Autumn James. And we're from Tennessee. We're here to talk about instant challenge. In addition to solving your team's challenge at the tournament, you'll get an instant challenge. Instant challenges are fun team building activities that are solved between five and eight minutes.
Work together to use only the rubber band and string provided to stack the cups in a pyramid. The team will have one minute to plan and six minutes to build.
You have to think quickly and draw to create a team.
Depending on which instant challenge you get, your team may be given the specific materials to design or create your solution or an original performance. Your team will then earn points for creativity and teamwork.
Your team's instant challenge score accounts for a quarter of your overall score at the tournament.
That's a lot. That's because instant challenge helps you work together and think quickly. Skills which are super helpful for the rest of your life.
You never know what you're gonna get. Make some props and create a skit about a family vacation.
Are we there yet?
Not yet.
Launch a rubber duck as far as possible. Use these materials to build a tower on the wall.
Yay, we did it!
Great job, guys.
We have all kinds of instant challenges and we're an happy digital devils. You can find them here.
Any team can be great at instant challenge, but awesome takes practice. So practice and be awesome. We hope you have a lot of fun with instant challenge.
Did you know the actual global finals is tomorrow starting?
It's part of the YouTube.
Thank you for listening.
We had a great time. This was our first year in the district doing Destination Imagination and we had three teams of fifth graders. One was a maze craze where our team built a robot and then robot had to go through a maze. And I learned a lot about robotics. And then, we, okay. Our other team did, uh, the fine arts challenge, which was called change of tune. So they had to, they had to create scenery and props and do a song that went with the change of scenery. And our other group did the inside impact, which is a social change and community service challenge that they participated in. And being our first year, we had two teams go to state finals. So that was, that was pretty good. Carrie Bean and my son Evan and I coached the teams and I think we're gonna need more coaches for next year because these guys plan on doing it again, right?
Yes.
And we, we want to have incoming fifth graders have the, have the opportunity to participate as well. And Evan, I'm gonna have you come up and talk a little bit about team managing.
Can you tell everybody who Evan is, please?
Evan is my son.
Alright.
So like, uh, Kat said, I am a offspring. But I've been involved with the program for seventeen years now. I have the blessing and ability to participate as a student. Um, and during college, I actually worked for headquarters and got to travel around the country promoting some challenges in the program itself. So I've been, uh, been provided many opportunities from this program. It doesn't end here. Uh, the opportunities for alumni and service and, uh, continuing the program and advocating for other kids in STEM programs continues far beyond what, uh, what the program offers. So, with that little pitch, um, being team manager was actually, this is my first year. I'm used to being on the organizational side or the participant side. Uh, team managing is a fantastic combination of them both. Uh, one, just working with kids and, uh, being on the team. Uh, being team manager, your goal is to guide and to, uh, provide resources, but not to step in, not to influence in any way, shape, or form. If someone comes to you with a question, you kind of use the Socratic method and say, hey, what's a potential avenue we could go? Like, oh, we need to learn about robotics, how about the shop teacher? Is there any YouTube videos or any things like this we could learn? And you never drive them towards a specific source. It's about self-research, self-responsibility, uh, self-guided learning, and being able to think on your feet, just like in instant challenge. Like you guys did, they have to do that in the actual program and for those instant challenges. I was sitting back there actually, looking, looking on the wall and I saw the SEC mission up there and it's remarkably similar how, uh, that is to DI's mission statement. It, it's all about providing skills, uh, for our children to succeed in an ever-changing world. Technology is changing faster than you can think. The economy is up and down all over the place and this, the ability to think on your feet and the ability to come at a problem from so many different angles is imperative and this program just provides an opportunity. Also, as a manager, there's no specific type of DI kid. I'm not looking, we're not looking for any specific type of fifth grader or any student. Also, as a manager, there's no specific type of D I kid. I'm not looking, we're not looking for any specific type of fifth grader or any student. That's one of the really cool things is you could have a kid who comes on your team, says nothing, is kind of clammed up the entire season, and then they say that one thing that changes your challenge completely. Like that was the magic bullet, that was it. That was the idea that took you from regionals to state or even to globals. And so like that's what we're looking for. We're looking for a safe space for those kids to open up, to explore the ideas that a lot of times get shot down in the classroom, get shot down in their friend groups. And this is a lot, this allows them a safe place to fail. And like, I'm sure you guys know, like, failure is where you learn. It's not your successes. If you do something once and you rock at it, what are you learning there? If you're learning to do it one way over and over again and having this place to, to practice and to fail allows so much more creativity and so much more potential than anything I've done before.
One thing, um, before Evan sits down, and I don't know if, if the board or even the committee understands the, the time commitment from the coaches, um, the parents. If I remember correctly, there was twelve Mondays in a row, I think. If, if not fifteen, that from three fifteen to five, five o'clock, these coaches showed up. No compensation. The coaches and the parents pretty much picked up most of the cost of the materials of them practicing. Outside of us finally pitching in to, to get them to state, they took care of all their transportation. It's just been an amazing experience for me to watch because even knowing these kids for what, four years now, guys? Without D I, I think there's very few of them that you would have ever seen in a board meeting presenting like this. And Evan said it best. It, uh, it's, it's a place for, for those to go and, and have fun to explore. And I'm hoping, um, that somewhere down the line, we can get a commitment from, from the board and possibly the district to, to make this a stipend-type club activity so we can even get bigger. Because I see what, I mean, for them to make it to state their first year ever is pretty much unheard of. I mean, let's be honest. And they, and we had two teams. It was incredible. So I applaud you guys, um, kids, parents, teachers. The time and commitment was amazing. So thank you. And he had six days to put this together. That tells you how good they really are.
And they did everything. They put together the slideshow and everything, so I think that's pretty awesome.
That was gonna be my thought. So Pete said, I think, so he wanted to have it put together for the board meeting. And so I emailed a lot of families. They all emailed that part away because they're that good. And seven of the kids on the next day, whose families said they could come to the board meeting on the twenty first, came in, um, we use wind time the last week, otherwise it's all done after school. And these kiddos, I just sent them, you're gonna present what D I is to the school board. There'll be a lot of adults in a room. You tell them what it is, why you like it, and give them a little taste of what you have done every Monday night and that Saturday in Osceola, and how fun while you're doing it. And then I'm just hands off. I, you know, I facilitate as a coach and I make sure that they're on track and everybody is modeling excellence towards each other. And you probably even saw that a little bit here tonight. And it's, it's really amazing to watch these students, um, have high character. And that is what I saw happen, um, a lot. And it was really fun. And like I said, I was there, but what you saw tonight was them. This was all theirs. And, uh, that's pretty cool to get from fifth graders. So I am so proud of you. And we have about twenty altogether that were in fifth grade that did this. Um, we had about seven on each team. So it's pretty cool. So thank you for letting us come here tonight. I know, were there any parents that wanted to say?
I was, I was just going to echo or say the same thing that District Newsmon did is that, um, really want to recognize the coaches for their time that they invested with the, the teams and helping out. And, um, it was really cool to have them be a part of it and allow the students and the kids to, uh, do something different. So thank you guys for, for all of that.
Well, the kids had fun doing this, I take it, huh? Well.
Towards the other was a little hair raising when we were trying to get it all packed into a car, but yeah.
Well, as a board, we really appreciate, uh, presentation, uh, creativity and creative thinking, uh, it's been, uh, that was part of my career. And, uh, so I appreciate that. There's usually a lot more ways to solve a problem than the one and sometimes, uh, the solutions to the problem aren't written even in the book. So sometimes you have to rewrite the book, uh, to get the solution. So I applaud the, uh, students for their imagination and their willingness to come forward and do a presentation to us and to compete as they do and do as well. So best of luck in the future and thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for your hard work. So also I'd like to thank the coaches and the parents, so.
I was just gonna take off a little bit of that also. And I'm Tennessee. I teach first grade at elementary school. I got her card. It was a D I and it was amazing to watch for the season. And I thought, I was so impressed with it that, um, Alicia Benzer and I and Margaret Baling, and Margaret's had some experience at D I as a student, um, have decided that we're also gonna facilitate some groups at the elementary level.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
Yeah, it's great, buddy.
Math and science quiz tomorrow morning at eight. Coke or Pepsi? Okay.
Yep, no, I'll introduce it then if you wanna show the video.
Okay, uh.
Nope.
Next on our presentation for Highlight on Youth, uh, we have a presentation by Lydia Hubbard, our National Sandy Hook Student Voices, uh, written essay contest, so.
So if you look and look at the TV, um, Lydia isn't, and she is here tonight but not in person. Lydia, uh, wanted really come tonight but, um, they're, they felt that we might be a little short and ball, so shows play ball. But this year during our kindness week, we had a week called Just Start With Hello. And it was part of the Sandy Hook promise from the elementary catastrophe where it's basically kids going up, students talking to others, or someone sitting alone, et cetera. So we, we, um, enjoyed this week at the middle school. And, um, at the same time, we presented to kids this opportunity. I mean, this is a national contest. And Lydia being the student that she is says, I got this. So with that said, um, knowing Lydia, she went and worked with Amanda Olson to put this video together, which is pretty cool. So I know we're running late, so let's go ahead and put in play.
Start with love is just the beginning. I saw someone want to start something with hello and it may have saved them a tremendous amount of money with a curtain. It had all started on a frigid October morning when all of my world seemed bright. No late assignments, excellent on time, filled with energy and ready to learn. But when I was outside, something was going on. I could tell from the tension that hung in the air like this late cloud set on a spring, if not snow. My fellow peers were talking amongst themselves as usual, but something was off. Their gazes were darting furiously around as though a monster was going to peep out at them from the shadows at any given moment. I was unsettled by this unusual behavior, but I ignored it. It's mostly evil weather, I thought. Boy, was I wrong. There was a girl who had met another to meet her at school behind the building, to meet her after school behind the building and not to tell anybody or else. She had sneered. The girl had no choice. The other girl was twice her size and would be able to pat her to the ground with both hands tied around her back, a blindfold over her eyes, and a snake twined around her neck. The girl would be crushed in, crushed if she tried to resist. The school day came and went with the girl avoiding everybody's gaze, especially the teachers. Many people gave the girl sad and painful looks, but what they were thinking was obvious. Gee, I'm glad I'm not her. I hope nothing too bad happens. I would talk about, to her about it, but then I might just get jumbled up in the mess. But one person stood out really proud. Not somebody dared to do a single task that a whole grade couldn't even attempt. Not somebody just went up to her and said, hi, I'm playing. You look like something's bothering you. Do you want to talk about it? The girl looked so stunned that if you were to have seen her through a window, you would have thought that the grim reaper just walked to, up to her and said, you look tense. Do you want a background? They had talked about the bullying that had gotten her and had developed a plan to deal with the problem. The girl was so relieved after she had, after she had been talked to and they had become good friends in the process. The girl was never harmed by the bullying, all because somebody took the turn to look at her and think, wow, she looks like she's having a bad day. Maybe I should go and ask her what's wrong. You have the power to stop violence of any store too. Everybody does. All you have to do is take a good look around her, see with your heart and not your eyes. It just takes one ill-spoken minds to crush somebody down and leave them in the dark with fear pressing against them, threatening to crush their whole world. It's up to us to lead them to the light. As Thomas Jefferson wrote in the Declaration of Independence, all men are created equal, as well as the basic rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You have the power to make somebody stand. You have the power to stop violence. And you have the power to start with a love. And just as I started this story with a love, I will now end it with a laugh.
So that's a result of her with this essay. She was awarded a two hundred dollar certificate and, um, her story was put on display at the Promise to You Summit in North Carolina. So, big deal.
Did you mention what grade she's in?
Fifth grade.
Oh my gosh.
And Amanda Olson and her put this together in twenty-five minutes this afternoon when she realized she couldn't come. So she's, she's one sharp cookie, but, um, it just, it's, it exemplifies a lot of the work, um, led by Ben Lammer, PBS Committee. That, that's gonna be an ever, ever ongoing task of the Just Say Hello, so. Kudos to her.
It's fantastic.
Kat's our thanks center, would you?
I will, yep.
So, no, it's, it's totally amazing. I guess I, I still acknowledge the talent of the students of this district, so. It's very enjoyable to sit here and listen to the accomplishments that they've, uh, created over the past year and years before, so. Pete, would you make sure you submit that one, um, so we can recognize your best effort in this board? So.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next highlight on youth, which is our unicycle, uh, demonstration.
They've been waiting out there. They've only been waiting hours.
They're riding on unicycles, come on.
Yeah, I said it'll be ten minutes. First of all, I said we, we're gonna, we're gonna demo before the school board. What's a school board? So you know that.
Nobody important.
That you, I know, I'll let it, I'll tell them later. Uh, that I got two grants, um, each for seven unicycles. I told them eighteen hundred dollars we brought. Uh, so I bought fourteen unicycles and when a student would come and take the class, I would say, when you go across the gym unassisted, this is your unicycle. It's not a little rotation. And then once it's theirs, they decorate it, so it doesn't get mixed up with the school. Um, we just, this Thursday will be our last class. We do it every Thursday. We've only been kicked out, I think, once for some events because since the auditorium, I get to have the gym on Sunday for. Um, I have thirty to sixty people there every Thursday night, all ages from first grade to seventy-seven years old. Um, tonight, I don't have very many middle school. Eighth graders are all in DC. They're, they're my advanced, my jugglers, so this is some of the younger kids, so they're gonna get a chance to show off. And we do quite a bit of community outreach. We're doing Robert's Parade, Baldwin Parade, I've given you this, Hammond Parade. Culvers has asked us to do juggling, unicycling, and balloon making for their junior hocks. It's still a lot, two days left out of their hockey program, but it's actually their foreign after-school. Hundred and fifty kids are gonna get that. We do a national night out. I send five, six kids to that. They do unicycling, juggling, and balloon making in Hammond. We're gonna demonstrate at the nursing home in August and the senior citizens really love it.
They're getting recruits under there.
Um, and foster care just contacted me, Super Tommy Foster Care, who will do an event for them to attract attention to getting more foster care kids. So I haven't got a date on that yet. But that's it. If you have any questions, I'm gonna take you out to the, for the little unicycles. And I expect you all in class next fall.
Thank you for the reminders.
Do you have a, I'm not. Okay, let me, let me see if I can get a list of specials. One is our guy Josh is out on vacation. What's next?
Yeah, that was another great demonstration. Yeah, they got a lot more talent than I got. No, but at least you gave it a good try this year. Break my neck. Okay. Now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is comments from the board members and superintendent. We'll start with the report on the staff appreciation breakfast tonight. Comments? John?
Uh, I went up to the middle school and, um, a lot of really neat things going on. Great to just get in and have conversation with, uh, teachers and staff as they were coming in for the day. There were several that scream in at that last minute because they were already in a meeting or in a, uh, prep activity, but they came in and very appreciative. And what I really liked at the middle school, I think it was student council that was coordinating it. They had a table just filled with, uh, different, uh, pens, post-it notes, all sorts of goodies for the teachers. And apparently the kids were figuring this out within their student council budget and recognizing the teachers as well. So when you see that type of character coming from within, the students reflecting back, uh, their desire to be grateful, it, it was really heartening. So it was, it was a good morning.
Yeah, I went to the elementary school and it was kind of a quick, uh, meeting because we had a, uh, a staff meeting early in the morning, Eric Jell. But, uh, did get to talk to a few of them, uh, and they're appreciative of the breakfast. Said our thank yous of how much we appreciate their hard work and, uh, things went well. Seems to be a lot of, uh, good comments regarding the school board, so that's much appreciated. I did make the high school again. It was kind of late when I got there, so classes were starting. And they had a, uh, assembly, I guess, early for the students. They were looking for recruits to the Explorer Program for, uh, balloon ambulance. So see if they're looking for any future medics, uh, EMs. Then they're done that and it can be a worthwhile endeavor to undertake, but, uh, you need to be of the right mind to do that, so. But, uh, again, the teachers are appreciative. It was nice to have conversations. Had a few good conversations. I had a few good conversations with a few of the teachers there and uh it was a good it was a good time and I think again, they enjoyed uh what the recognition and the treats, so.
I stopped by the district office first and they kicked me out because they're too busy. It's amazing to watch the the beehive that's at work, you know, and I stopped in and everyone got they were getting coffee and whatever, but you just see how much activity is going on and we had we got to talk payroll, which is a just a interesting conversational in its own. And then I went to the bus garage and the grounds uh crew were there first, so I got to talk to them. And then the bus drivers started coming in and just interesting, all the different perspectives that you hear about the district, but the thing that's just constant is it's just a buzz. There's so much going on at all times. They didn't let me run the stop sign or the door to the bus, but other.
So yeah, I did. It was a good it was a good day. Uh, thank you for those that were able to make that. I know the staff appreciates it, so. I don't know if you had any feedback on that, you know, Tim?
You did a good job.
Okay. Okay, uh, next item is a report on the recognition and retirement event that we had on May eighteenth at the uh high school, so.
Tried something new this year um to help increase attendance, more of a captive audience. In the past, we've had at uh Pheasant Hills, um who have been wonderful hosts. And we've had Ruth Hurchin cater it, who's done an outstanding job. Um, but again, like I said, we tried something new. I did it in their new auditorium. And we had Panther catering, Courtney Hawkins and her Panther catering students uh make the meal and the dessert and present it. And they were in full uniform and they did an outstanding job. Um, I'd also like to recognize um a number of ladies in the district office that helped set everything up. It made it the presentation was outstanding. Um, Pam, Tammy, Kim, Michaela, and Elaine, um uh set up everything, had it looking beautiful. Tried something new this year as well with perfect attendance awards, had a number of perfect attendance winners. And then I also did a nearly perfect attendance for those that missed one day. So and I went retroactive to two thousand and thirteen when I started, so that went over very well. Um, and then Donna Stanish was the lone retiree. Presented some gifts to her, recognized her, played a trivia game like we always do. Uh, wanna give a shout out to Pam, plans everything right down to every detail. Months in advance, two sheets worth of things, just does a great job making that uh program go very well. Also, uh, I'd like to recognize Greg Green, who received his fortieth Year of Service Award. Received a standing ovation. It was pretty neat, a very, very special moment um for that program. Um, and there were some other things I know Howard and John were there, I'll let you um say if yours.
Yeah, John?
Uh, it it's always a grateful opportunity to share a few comments with the um uh staff and and really what I shared about was um some of the leadership legacy experiences that I've had the opportunity to have in uh eight words, four phrases around pursue excellence, live passionately, care deeply, and inspire others. And and I linked it back to that must be the I must have learned it from hanging around with educators because that's really the essence of who they are and it it defines education so well in those eight words. And then also from some of the um uh lessons I've learned along the way from mentors, other managers, readings I've done, I called on two of them and the first one was grass is green, uh it's grass, the the saying is grass is really is greener on the other side. Um, the way I think about it is grass is green where it's watered, fertilized, and well cared for. And so sometimes it's easy to uh think that grass may be greener on the other side, but what are we doing to um care for ourselves as a community, a community of educators and teachers and parents and students so that uh we do know that we have well taken care of, well fertilized, well watered lawn right where we're at. And then the second was is that um uh take time to calibrate your compass. So then times of need, that you always know where your true north is. And so when you lose your way a little bit, it's good to go back to what matters most. It goes back to those guiding principles. It goes back to that well calibrated uh compass. And so I thank the um um really the team for being willing to engage in those conversations that are not necessarily easy to have, but are so important in helping us stay calibrated. Again, as a group of teachers, as the staff, as administrators, board, really as community and parents. Because at the end of the day, uh we do need to keep track of where our true north is. And we do that together by keeping each other calibrated. So it was a neat opportunity and thankful for getting the chance to share a few words.
And I gave a few words also. I was a little bit of reminiscing. Just looking back even five years ago of the uh tremendous changes that we've seen in the district. Two thousand thirteen was kind of a momentous year for us. We hired Tim. We went through the school fire. We had Panther camp. We did the remodeling at the uh elementary school to get that ready for uh fall classes. We went through referendum in the last few years. We've built all kinds of facilities. Had a lot of uh new teachers come into the district. And so just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work and uh wish Donna Stanish uh well in her retirement. I hope that she has a very long, healthy, uh prosperous uh retirement and hopefully uh she can enjoy those uh grandkids, so. They're always a fun gift to enjoy, so. So that was it was a good time. Uh, I would like to also give kudos to the Panther Catering. Uh, the meal was fantastic. The desserts were fantastic. So, uh, a lot of choices, uh, what we had to eat and uh as much as you wanted, so it was it was great. Give a shout out to the ladies of the district office. Uh, it was a great display. Awards and setting up that stage, so. It was one of the best ones we've ever had. Hope we can continue over the years such a event, so. Thank you all that had uh time that I spent setting that up, so it was a truly great time and I really appreciate it, so. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is update at the meeting with our local legislators. Latest updates that I have to present are I've sent invitations out to Representative Zimmerman uh for the thirtieth district. He's accepted uh the invite uh to appear before the board here on the eighteenth of June. I finally made contact with Senator Shachner uh in her office and she's agreed to be here at our board learning meeting on the sixth of August. I've not had a chance to contact Representative Staff Schultz's office yet. Decided a date and I think one of the things we're going over tonight is a list of the meeting dates, but I'm looking at this point probably sometime either August or September. See if we can pull him in for a meeting. I don't know if anybody else would have any comments on that. Will extend an invitation, hopefully with the list dates. Yeah, hopefully we can get him in here also. A lot of items we'd like to discuss with them, a lot of things that are going on in Madison or have occurred. One of the things that uh I'm interested in is any information on the uh Blue Ribbon Committee for school funding that's going on. I know they met at Turtle Lake today, so. I don't know if anybody that attended from this area, so. Okay, any questions or comments at this time regarding to that? Okay, moving on to the next item then is the update on the school district uh boundary appeal board hearing. That was held in Madison uh last Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Trying to be brief, I'm looking forward to the Zones of Regulation presentation. I know you've been patiently waiting. Um, Howard and I went down to Madison DPI us Wednesday and I had the hearing again. Want to recognize Pam for all her efforts of putting that whole packet, you know, together for the family and for us. Um, it was interesting. I asked, I was a member, I was a committee of three and they are board members in their respective districts, small, medium, and large school districts. And they're also um board members on their respective CISA Board of Control. Um, there's supposed to be four and then there was the clerk or the gal that was running the meeting, but she was not a voting member. So one question I had to myself was what, you know, if they have four, what if you have a two-two vote? Thought that was odd, but they had three. And um much like a typical hearing or trial, it kind of had the the folks that wanted to um to uh
Detach.
Detach. And we were on that side and then um superintendent for Baldwin Woodville was there. And he he gave his side of it and then they they um went by the five criteria, right down the line, and commented on that and then they eventually um voted. And um unfortunately, they voted two to one, um not in favor of detaching. So the Keatsy family uh still um are residents of the Baldwin Woodville School District, so.
And probably the thing that hurt our case was uh on our open enrollment policies. That were pretty liberal in that and which the student could readily uh open a role in our district. Uh, and since we had a bus that passed right next to their property, they were able to hop that bus without any uh major in- interferences with our operations, so. It's unusual for an open enrollment uh student to be bussed to our school, but it's convenient for them and it's convenient for us. And given those opportunities, they didn't feel that it was uh the best interest of the Baldwin School District to detach the property from that district since it penalizes them uh both equalized value and school aid this this time, so. Plus, they were part of an island and uh in our district. And by detaching their land from Baldwin Woodville and attaching it to St. Christ Central didn't eliminate all the properties within that island. And so with that reasoning, I think that was uh one of the reasons they denied it. They strongly suggested that Baldwin Woodville and St. Christ Central get together to try and work out uh elimination of these islands. So, um, maybe something that we'll have to work into in the future. A lot of that uh is driven by what the landowners want, so.
And I I knew the argument would be, oh, they can still open enrolls. I tried to get at it and say, although I recognize that the student's able to open a role, legislation can change and that, you know, opportunity might close in the future. This is one way of guaranteeing that it's able to continue to be our student. And also, all school boards are able to set limits and and on that. Well, then they they followed up. Said, do you set limits on your open enrollment? I said, no. So, you know. So in this case, although it's good for students, it wasn't necessarily good for this students. In or this family, I see. But it was it was a interesting process and now we're um wiser because of it, I guess, if it happens again, you know.
We weren't the only uh school district down there in the area with appeal, it was only Board of Appeal cases that day, so.
I think they probably do regions of the state because they intentionally have board members from another part of the state, so there's no conflict of interest or whatever. Familiarity, yeah. Couple other school districts, neighboring us there that day, yeah, so.
Any other questions or comments there? Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation. Uh, the Zones of Regulation book study presentation by our elementary staff. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Um, so this group of elementary teachers and occupational therapists did a book study as a part of our potential development on a book called Zones of Regulation. Um, unfortunately, Alicia Rose couldn't see her tonight, but she was also part of that book study, so. Um, we're gonna go ahead and yeah, it was yourself, sorry. I'm Halsey Creo and I teach fourth grade.
Amy Rude, teaching here.
Jill Durax, I'm physical therapist.
Miss Gessler, teach kindergarten.
And Corey Mallon, fourth grade. Are we able to get that up on the screen?
Sorry. Are you the HTMI?
Yep, it should be on the.
Okay, all right.
How about your mirror?
Just the mirror.
Cool, you have the mirror. There you go.
Thanks. Um, so to start off, uh, I want you to kind of reflect on your day. Usually you don't reflect on your day until you get home at night. But I want you to do a little bit sooner. Um, so take just twenty to thirty seconds to think of kind of how your day went, whether there was a scenario or a situation that happened and what kind of response um you had because of that.
Most of those.
We'll make you tear, but um just be aware kind of uh of that situation and how you felt about it and the emotions and reaction that you had kind of throughout our presentation tonight.
Okay, so the Zones of Regulation um is a curriculum based, I know, she's looking. Um, this was actually designed or written by um, if you guys, any of you guys remember um Deb Schach? She was a geometry teacher manager of the district for many, many years. Her daughter is actually an occupational therapist, um and I've had the pleasure of meeting her a few times. And she is the author and the founder of this program, so. Pretty pretty cool and has ties back to our district, actually. Um, but this is a a national and actually even international used curriculum. Um, the Zones of Regulation is really based on helping kids, but also adults to self-regulate. And what self-regulate means is having your behavior and your emotions match your current situation or your current experience that you're in. And for adults, sometimes that can be hard, but for kids especially that don't have a cognitive development or maturity that we have or as adults have, um, that can be really hard. That can be really hard for them to self-regulate through throughout the day and throughout their community, at school and outside of school. Um, initially, this was used for um, you know, kind of mental health or um behavioral difficulties, but really um in time, they found how useful this is across really all populations.
Okay, so um what are the zones? So there's four zones coded by color, um blue, green, yellow, and red. Um, and I just want to note before I kind of briefly explain what they are, that we um, there's no bad zone. Um, and kids are expected to be in all the zones at one point or another, so um, that's just kind of important to stress and make sure the students understand that. Um, but blue zone, um, you could be feeling sad or sick, tired, bored. Um, the green zone is you're just happy, calm, um, just to go on about your day, um, the way you would like it to go. Yellow zone, frustrated, maybe worried, little extra wiggly, or really excited about something. Um, red zone's a little more intense, um, mad, angry, mean, maybe you're terrified. Um, your body's out of control. Um, so those are just kind of the four basic zones um that you could be in at one point or another throughout your day.
So with that said, I just put a few scenarios up here of what zone would you be in? Now, there's no guarantees. Some might be in the red or some might be in the blue, depending on what happens, but uh, number one, so you turn on the TV and you find out that a war has broken out. You immediately may have been having a great day. You're in the green zone and that could switch somebody to being mad or angry, um, in the red or feeling sad possibly in the blue. Um, find out that you've won the lottery. It shows how fast you can change. Things can change. You're home with nothing to do. You're feeling more of that bored feeling.
Grease.
See, everybody's saying something different. Not every scenario in life is going to put every person, um, in the same zone, we, everyone is who they are, so. Um, you found out that your best friend is moving away, um, we see that a lot this time in the school year. Uh, I have some kiddos at school that are gonna be moving districts and, um, they're kind of feeling blue and I put both of them in the blue and we gotta work our way through that and um, coming up, we'll talk about different techniques and things that we use to get that out of, um, from moving from zone to zone. Um, your favorite sport athletes come to dinner with you, um, your pet has gone missing, you come down with the flu or maybe you had plans for months and also they change at the last minute. Uh, we'll talk about being flexible at school a lot and flexible as adults as well to help with those zones and keep us out of that, um, feeling blue zone, so. Just some different scenarios to think about, but it shows that throughout the day, like Mr. said, that we expect kids and adults to be in all four zones at many different times throughout the day. So how are they used and what is the impact in the classroom? We're all gonna kind of just give a few examples of what we use inside the classroom, so Jill with the OT classroom.
Yep, so this is actually a picture of my classroom and most people familiar with the elementary school, this was actually the book room last year and now is an ideal and wonderful OT space, so I thank everybody involved with that for transforming that. Um, Mr. Green's still here, yeah, he's, he really helped me a lot with that this summer, so. Um, in I, for OT, I work with primarily the special education population, but through that can outreach to others and that's something that I that I like to be able to do. Um, in OT, my job just in a nutshell is to promote function and independence throughout kids' school day, so that might look a bazillion different ways and a bazillion different strategies of spicy, all fun stuff in my room. Um, because we're working on so many different things to help those kids be as functional and as independent as possible. Um, so I often teach zones in my classroom, either one-on-one or small group and often in conjunction with the guidance counselors um, or our school psych psychologist who also teaches these things. And the target is for self-awareness, being aware of their emotion or their behavioral response and then also for calming and coping strategies for when we are in those intense zones, how can we get back to a more maybe appropriate zone for a learning environment? Um, and what I've really found out, as I've already said, we've all kind of touched on already is just how beneficial it is if we can all use the same language. So even though this started, like I said, maybe more in special education, we're finding that if we can use this across our whole school and everybody understands what red zone means and everybody understands that green zone is best for learning, even though it's okay for not always in it, but how can we get back there? Um, and all be on the same page, it's it's just been an amazing journey thus far.
Um, in a fourth grade classroom, I've used, there's many different manipulatives and in the Zones of Regulation book that we're doing our study on, there's a ton of projectables that you can print out of out of this book. Um, the district was kind enough to get a hold of enough for us to have one at some point or another. Uh, but this is one of the big ones that I took from it and it's a poster called How Big Is My Problem? And I have it on a big poster in the room and it seemed to have helped a lot with kiddos coming up, um, after recess or whatever time it may be during the day. We've gotten the common language of, is this problem a one or is this problem a four? Um, at the elementary school, if you're getting up into the fours or fives, that's when we would have to talk with Shelley or Lindsay. Um, but a lot of times they'll look at it and say, oh, this problem is just a one, we can solve this one by ourselves. Um, and we give them different coping skills and different common language that, uh, the Zones Regulations has out there. Um, also ones that kids make up on their own, um, every kid is going to be able to solve their problem in different ways and every kid is unique, so. Um, I know some teachers have kept binders or different things and I'm hoping to be getting further in good after doing this book study of having individualized, um, things for the kiddos to help with this, solving their problems and uh, what scale does it truly end? So it goes from a one to a five, as you can see, it also correlates then too with the the colors of the zone, so a one is green, blue, you got your type of yellow, and then, um, the red at a five where they're probably going to be angry, you can see the angry face there and how can we, how can we bring this back down to a lower level and get us back into that green zone? So this poster is, um, well-known in my classroom and I think it has helped a ton with problem solving.
Alright, so this, these are some pictures from my classroom, um, and so uh, talking about zones and feelings, et cetera, if in kindergarten, it looks a little different than, um, fourth grade. A lot of times these kiddos, um, don't have the vocabulary, um, to tell you how they're feeling or maybe they just don't even know what the feeling is. Um, so you kind of gotta find different ways, um, where they're comfortable kind of explaining to you how they're feeling um, or or how they got there, um, and help them through that and then how the tools that we use um, to help them move, um, in and out of different zones, whether it's a tool to alert or a tool to calm. Um, so some of the things that I use in my classroom is I actually have a, what we call the calming corner and it's just, um, curtains on a PVC pipe um, in a little corner and in the calming corner, um, there's different materials like stress balls and what the kids call bubblers, so they just flip and you can watch the bubbles, um, you can listen to music, there's drawing or coloring, um, there's different books you can see there, um, for each zone. Um, and then there's coping skills choice board, which is just like a picture cue and those are things that we do as a whole group for like brain breaks, so um, they can look at the picture card and know what that is, whether it's counting to ten, um, or taking what we call rainbow breaths. Um, and then, uh, we have a timer, so there's a three-minute and a five-minute timer so that they're not in there for half the day, but they do know that. Um, they can go take a break, but they do need to come back. Um, weighted blanket, textured rug, um, anything to kind of stimulate their senses or again, kind of get their mind thinking differently and then we can talk about, um, once they're at a point where they're ready to talk about, we can talk about their feelings and give them the language like Jill said, um, using that common language. They really make a connection to that, um, because, um, like we mentioned, not all children will be or the same event will put them in the same zone. So if we say, you know, this act, this reaction or action caused this child to be in the red zone, they may not make a connection because it wouldn't put them in the red zone, um, but you can say, you know, because of this, you know, they're feeling in the red zone and they can make that connection knowing that they themselves have felt that way before, maybe because of a different, um,
Still.
Yeah, different scenario or situation, so it's just, um, anyways, that's, looks a little different in kindergarten, but that's kind of how we manage and and work our way from zones there, so. Um, back to a fourth grade classroom, um, the way I use zones, uh, in a bunch of different ways, but, um, one of the big ways um, is actually through a behavior intervention called a check-in, check-out. Um, so this is an example of a student's check-in, check-out sheet. Um, and basically the child has two goals, um, and we kind of track their behavior, um, throughout the day. It's in a little folder, it travels with the student and, um, gives us a good idea of the patterns that we're seeing as far as when their behaviors occur, um, the things that happen to occur some sort of response. Um, a lot of times put them in, children in the red zone. Um, so you can see there are, um, a couple different check-ins throughout the day. Um, the first one is first thing in the morning and usually just ask, what zone are you in this morning? And usually when they come in the morning, you can kind of already tell that, you know, maybe it wasn't a great night at home or something at breakfast or recess, it's set them off already, so. Um, you know, they may say yellow, they may say red, um, and then you just ask, well, what am I, what can I help you with or what do you need to get? And a lot of times, some kids just need time, they just need a break, they need a time, um, just to themselves and then later on in the day, the student also has a check-in at lunchtime and then a check-out at the end of the day as well. Um, you can see that sometimes they're with different people throughout the day, um, just to kind of give them another person to support them. Um, another activity I've done with my fourth graders is, um, they have kind of come up with their own strategies um, for when they're in certain zones, so, um, a couple of examples were, um, you know, when you're in the red zone, some of the kids thought of doing yoga to calm them down, um. In the blue zone, some of the kids said that they would go outside and play with their dog. Um, somebody had said that they're gonna drink, um, their favorite drink or have a snack or eat some candy or something that would just make them a little bit happier, so, um, it's been really successful, um, as far as using it with a behavior intervention, because it gives us just a really good idea as far as kind of how the day is going, how it might go and what we can do and what they can do to help themselves um, kind of get back to where they need to be in order to have a successful day at school.
Alright, and then kind of going back to kindergarten classroom, so a lot of times when kids come in, they don't have that language piece and so right away, beginning of the school year, um, I try to introduce the zones as quickly as possible and I actually learned about the zones a couple years ago from my son and daughter when they were going through some difficult times and so we were introduced to it as a parent standpoint of it and then I integrated it into my classroom and was a part of the book study as well too. But, um, basically, what you can kind of see on the left-hand side is the kids are actually engaging in a charades game. Um, so I would give them like a zone and they'd have to demonstrate that with their bodies now. So if you can see at the top, there's one little boy that's kind of cowering over like this. Um, we have some girls that are kind of crossing their arms and their and their bodies. So we talk a lot about it, that it's not just your facial expression, it can be your whole body. And so we play like trade games that way, we made classroom books that kids can go back and look at to help them identify the zones. And then once they get familiar with the zones and be able to like identify, oh, this kind of feeling or emotion fits into this zone, then we work on building toolboxes and our toolbox, um, on the right-hand side is kind of an example of different strategies or techniques that they can do to change zones. Um, and so this was one of my students' examples, so on the front just says my toolbox and then on the backside, these are like the picture cards that I use in my classroom that are a little bit more kindergarten friendly with the faces. And then inside are different strategies that I've taught throughout the year to kind of help them self-regulate, whether it is we're really frustrated, we need to move back kind of into yellow and then into green, or it might just be where we're really excited and we just need to calm our bodies to get back into the learn, like the green zones, we're ready to learn. And so some of them that you can kind of see there, there's just, um, different kinds of breathing strategies. One of them's the six-sided breathing where you breathe in, hold, breathe out, and you kind of go around the hexagon. We, I try to teach a lot of them that the kids can actually do on their own without having extra things to be with them. So another one that we teach is like blowing out candles, so I teach my kids, okay, you have five candles, blow out candles hard like you're blowing out a birthday candle, so. And then by the time they get down, hopefully their body is a little bit calmer. Um, we do talk about too, about other strategies or things that they can do at home. Um, one of the examples up there is like petting a a cat or a dog, obviously we don't have pet like cats or dogs in the classroom, but we do have stuffed animals. And so we talk about that too, about just being able to like pet someone that's a little bit soothing for them, so. It's kind of how I've introduced it and used it in my classroom and I've had some good feedback from parents too who have said that they, they've, their child's been out someplace and has been really having a hard time and was able to pull out their five candles, took deep breaths and was able to calm down, so it's kind of, it's fun to see that.
Um, okay, so I think we are really nearing the finish line of becoming a zone school. And what that means is we are talking about it in nearly, if not every classroom and throughout our entire elementary building. What started out as, uh, what I would think of as a tiny idea um, has turned into this incredible beautiful thing called the Zones Room. Um, and this is pictures of our Zones Room at the elementary school. We opened it on March first, we, okay, so the group of us has been a book study, there's also another group of us that have been kind of um, the initiative for the Zones Room. And it's a place where kids can ready themselves for their next step. So you see like the last bullet there about preventing and promoting. Um, some people look at this and they go, okay, kids are in this room, jumping on the trampoline, laying in the tent, okay, where's the education behind this? But really, for some of these kids, are hardest-to-reach kids. Sometimes they just need a minute, sometimes they just need a strategy, sometimes they just need a person to help those, help them through that minute and that strategy. And this room, give that to them. Ten minutes in here might mean three hours in their classroom. Fifteen minutes in here twice a day might mean that you make it in their regular education room and not in the special education room. I thought that's bad, but if they can be with their peers and they can be where the learning is happening, that's where all of us as educators want our littlest friends to be, is where they can learn. And if they're unavailable, if they're constantly in red and they're constantly in yellow, how are we gonna reach them? How are we gonna build skills and character if we can't get to them? And so having additional resources and additional opportunities to help, um, our our friends who maybe struggle the most um, to be as successful as possible. This tool would only, or this room is only open in March and the feedback has been positive. Um, it's heavily utilized, Shelley, Lindsay, you guys wanna jump anytime, Pat, um, please, you know, you can speak to this, but heavily utilized, very effective. Just very, very pleased with the direction that we're moving in, helping kids to self-regulate and be the best, the best kids they can be when they're with us. Anything else, wanna add about that?
You nailed it, Charlie.
What questions do you have?
So this clearly has your group excited, but everyone across the board is really just buying into this in a big way?
I would say at first, I would say at first, it was a little bit slower catch because as you can imagine, I'll let you touch. But as you, as you can imagine, people are, people, uh, people are a little bit like, okay, one more thing. How are we gonna fit, one more thing, you guys are asking us to do this and do this and we're trying to teach these kids math and reading and you know, all this, all this important and great stuff. Um, but I think over time, with some education, you know, we provide some some education to all staff, some training. Um, people, uh, staff in general are realizing that this isn't just one more thing. This is what we're doing within what we're already doing every single day, it's not one more thing, it's within. And when we can do these small things with what we're already doing, big changes happen.
We've been lucky enough too to have trainings on it like this Zones Room, um, so that everybody's kind of on the same page, we're using the same common um, language and as we build it, starting with kindergarten, we're gonna see that same language all the way up through fourth grade and into the middle school up into the high school and we're hoping that this, it's just one thing that'll never go away, we just keep using it and using that same common knowledge so that we can give our students or the kids the best education possible. It's really helps to keep them in the wrong zone, I think teachers are really starting to see that and it really doesn't take that much to handle it.
I know, you know, one of the emphasis, emphases in the district has been reducing bullying, both the bullies and those that are being bullied. Uh, seems to be an ongoing complaint with some parents in the district and I know we've spent a lot of time working on that and positive behavior modifications, so. How does something like this, uh, fit in with helping reduce the aspects of the bullying and the stress of being bullied?
I can kind of go back to my thought that I had with the, how big is my problem part? Um, a lot of times it it, uh, shows the kiddos that they have, um, the right to speak or have the pot and power to come and tell us about their problems and we can help cope with them, I feel like a lot of the kids have come to me more so than keeping it to themselves, they'll start speaking out about it. As I've noticed with, I'm talking about that, how big is my problem poster, they'll come and tell me right away, Miss Moll, I have a, I have a number four problem. Like, we need to address this right away and oftentimes it does end up being something with the bullying, end up bitter side of it, so we can deal with it that way then.
And the opposite of that, I think that it also promotes that sometimes kids think that everything is a big deal.
Absolutely.
So they go home and and the opposite also is happening because of the one, two, three, four chart, five chart, um, maybe something that they could easily solve on their own.
It seems to me like it would make it so, uh, students realize that they're not the only ones who get to the red or whatever to that.
And then it's okay to be in the red, like we're teaching them, it's not bad, it's okay to be in red, but how do we handle it? I had a kid one time, we were talking about how this make you feel, you know, red zone, okay, what's something in the red zone that you need? If I'm in the red zone, punch him in the face, dead serious, that's what he says. At third grade, punch him in the face, and I said, whoa! I understand that maybe that's how you're feeling inside when you're in the red zone, but why might not that be our best strategy? Then I'll be in trouble, then the kid will be hurt, you know, really talking through, that's how he felt, admit it. Just plain and straight, that's how he felt, but that's what he
Just plain and straight, that's how he felt, that that's what he should do. And we talk through it and talk about here, let's think about some of the other things that are maybe more appropriate. So, these things, these consequences and these things that are ultimately gonna make you stay in the red zone aren't gonna happen. Another little side note too is, you know, you mentioned K through four, actually, four K is even implemented this. And the kids get it. It doesn't even take long for them to understand that blue is their sad and green is, the colors and the emotion, it is amazing, but they get it and they get it like that.
And I will say too, the start like the bullying goes, I feel like the zones regulation teaches a lot of acceptance. You know, we teach a lot of acceptance through our cares. And I just overall, I feel like most elementary students are pretty accepting of others. You know, they've been in classrooms with kids who, you know, maybe, you know, have different needs or different accommodations and those kinds of things. So, they kind of grow up with these kinds of things. But I feel like, you know, in teaching the zones regulation, it teaches a lot more of that acceptance. And even in fourth grade, I know that there were some, you know, concerns that this was too primary for fourth grade or upper elementary. But these fourth graders who need it and even those who really don't completely glom onto it and they just run with it. We were having a discussion of things that set you into the red zone. And another student made an interesting comment. And he said, well, the things that I do when I'm in the red zone can set somebody else off into a zone too. So, just even that awareness of my actions and my behaviors and the things that I do also impact other people and set them off into different zones as well. So, just that awareness of not only themselves, but of other people as well, I feel like I've seen a big difference in.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one last thought, you know, we, we keep telling ourselves that we're a data-driven district. And sometimes, you just know when it feels right. But it would be interesting in how do we do this, right? Without running around with clipboards and checkmarks and all that. What's the shift from that prevent and promote versus having to react? And how many escalations do we go down? And how do we see these students that may have been struggling with their self-regulation emerge from that, right? And so, I wanna be careful that we're not chasing every kid around with a clipboard. But then, there's also that, how do you express the, the real value for moving from reactive to proactive? You know, I had a chance to visit on Wednesday in the lunch line. And now, you have to remind me of our, who joined Alyssa at the elementary school?
David.
David, okay. First of all, the kid's gotta catch a little enthusiasm about his job. Holy smokes! Talk about someone who's just on fire with the passion of what he gets to do every day. But he talked about how much different it is and that there, he said, we're still really busy, but we're busy on different things. And I said, well, how do you know, you weren't here last? Well, yeah, but they're busy on more effective, more efficient, more proactive items. And that's really what would be the story to tell behind some of these. It is the within. You're already managing your classroom. Do you wanna be managing it from a proactive set where there's this zone of regulation? Or the reactive set where it's an interrupter? And so, how do you measure that is the real question? Or do we care? We just have the sense that it's the right thing to do? It's a curiosity question more than anything for Michelle.
We, talking about the data and not running around following someone with a clipboard. But we do use Edge a climber as a huge data source for ourselves and what we do with this. Lindsay especially, and she can speak to that. But just about u- using these check-in, check-outs to be able to determine, were they able to self-regulate now or not? We're able to see the patterns, you know, what, what are the pattern of the behaviors for these kids as well? So, it's really.
So, I'll just share one hour quick to talk about that. We have a second grade student who is a special ed, just a real high flyer. He just wasn't able to self-regulate at the beginning, so we put him on a check-in, check-out. We just met on him today, actually, and it's so cool to see. I mean, he has a goal of eighty percent, so like his graph is up and down, you know, every day. We started the Zones Room on March first. And since that day, he is at ninety-five percent of meeting his goal every day because he's learned how to self-regulate. We've put those breaks into his day. He can stay in class, he can focus, and he's a totally different student.
Let's just.
And, and I think when you say buy-in, the teacher, now that they see that, it's like, oh, this does work, you know? And, and we tried really.
Can I go there?
Yeah, right? And we tried really hard, you know, that's not another thing. So, like Shelly's taking kids to the Zones Room, I'm taking kids. We're not putting it on the teachers, we're helping them, we're working together so that, okay, we'll take them for, and we go ten minutes from the time we leave till the time we're back. We are in there, we do our thing, we're back. And it's just, it's amazing to see.
You can almost attribute it to another version of win, really. It's what I need. And some of these kids just need this education in a little bit of a different way. We also have a data tracking sheet that lives in the Zones Room that says the date. Kids are never unattended in there. They are only in there with an adult, usually a peer professional or some, a specialist or a administrator. And in the sheet, it says the date and what activity, what strategy was used. And then, there's also another area for effectiveness. So, coming back later and saying, this worked, here's why, or it didn't, it's a simple note. That notebook is full. And we can go back and check specific students. They visited this room, you know, this much time. And they're not going in the room when they're all ready, the volcano's already erupted. That is a no-go. It's not a, I'm gonna blow a car, so I get to go to this cool room. Nope. You only enter the room when you're in a good place or escalating a little bit to, to keep you in a good place. So, I don't think we've, one of our fears, if you will, was it is gonna be a favorable consequence when it shouldn't be, does that make sense? And it has not been.
It's not a reward.
A reward, and it has not been.
And even the kids who don't visit the Zones Room or, you know, just don't need that during the day, don't ask questions, they don't, they don't ask, they don't beg, they don't, they, they know what it is and they know what it's for, they know the reason why kids go in and go out through the day. And it's just part of what they need and we go on with our day. So, it really just becomes kind of part of, part of, yeah.
And if you ask kids who's, who would be in that room, they could have given you the list. Cause they see them on a recess and they, and they, they know the kids that benefit from downtime.
And are probably appreciative of it.
Yeah.
Because they're not having that bullying piece on the playground.
And it doesn't change their zone sometimes too.
Right.
Well, I guess that was gonna be a part of my question is alluding to that. And you know, John, I can appreciate when you say if, if it just feels right, it's a good thing. But the data for me is, you know, if we're, and it's great that you've got this notebook because that answered my question before you even had to ask, is do we know what's triggering some of these kids and do we know what works best? First, I mean, some of those kids might be better served with a different approach. And if we're keeping data on it, perfect, because then people know automatically, oh, you know what, that's little Johnny or little Timmy or little Suzie. And this is normal triggers, this is the best way to approach them with getting them back to where they need to be. So, I'm glad to know that we've got that going in that room.
There's also four different, we didn't, I didn't wanna get into this too much. I know you guys are all such busy people, it's a long time. But there's four different areas in the room that are kind of research-driven. So, like when a student is needing a calming, what are naturally neurologically calming strategies? And there's, you know, deep pressure, heavy work, proprioceptive input, kind of different language I'm speaking, I know. But as an educational therapist in child development, that sensory processing and goes hand-in-hand with self-regulation. And so, there's research behind the activities that we're choosing, you're not just going in there and free-for-all. There is a chart that says, this is the behavior scene, this is what I would try first. And there's a whole web of that so that, you know, staff are not as first-trained, comfortable and have a starting point. And then, there's also the four category of calming, the heavy work, movement-based strategies for those kids who are very, very, very wiggly, you know, and who may have a diagnosis or not of ADHD, but who need time to be able to move. And so, there's specific strategies that are performed in this room, it's not free.
So, just to kind of wrap up, we kind of started, we did a great job. Just to kind of wrap up, we started, you know, reflect on your day, think of a situation, a scenario that kind of elicited a certain response. So, even as adults, and that's something that we teach the kids too, is, you know, we encounter situations throughout the day that either send us into the red zone or the blue zone or the yellow zone. And somewhere along the line, you have come up with a strategy, whether it's calling a friend, you know, going for a little walk, you know, whatever your strategy was to get yourself back to a place where you could get back to work and be productive. Just finding that kids, some kids just need a little bit more support in that. And so, you know, along the line somewhere, you learned it, whether it was, you know, through your family culture or by yourself or however, just finding that kids just need a little bit more support in that area, so.
And we just feel that the earlier we can do that for kids and allow that opportunity to be able to self-regulate that, the better off we're gonna see it in these older, you know, ages, especially with just mental health and all the thing, conversations that we continue to have here. So, move slow to go fast.
Yep.
So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Well, I wanna thank you for your presentation. I guess it's interesting and exciting for me to see you kick off in these endeavors and these book studies. But it's also more exciting to see it actually implemented and see what the results are. So, I wanna commend you for your hard work and thank you for the presentation. It's nice to keep the board informed and things that we're not readily informed of, so. Keep up the good work and thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, one last thing is a quick on the door, for real though. Also, really truly wanna thank you guys for real though, for the support to do a project like this. I don't think all administrators and all schools would see the value in this and San Francisco certainly does in character education and building good people. That's evident when I come to work every day. And so, I thank you for your support, all of you for that. And allowing us to do good things. Thank you.
I just wanna, as they're walking out, thank this group because all of the groups that do a book study have the option to come do a board presentation. This is the only group that chose to. Some of them did presentations within their buildings. But I think it's really nice when you take the extra time to come to a board meeting and present this information so they know, you know, the value that we're getting out of some of the old comp dollars that we're spending in the book studies and the different things we're doing. So, thank you for taking the time to come and do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda is our financial reports from our treasurer.
Bank account balances as of April thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Citizens state checking, three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Citizens money market, one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Citizens money market fund, forty-six, fifty dollars, seventy-seven cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. American deposit management referendum proceeds, two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars, eighty-five cents. For total bank account balances of two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, sixty-two cents.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Motion Kirk second David to accept the treasurer's report as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of the meeting minutes of our April sixteenth wage and benefit meeting, our board meeting of April sixteenth, our teacher meet, confer meeting, April twenty-third, our SCC special board meeting on April twenty-seventh, and our SCC board learning meeting of May seventh, approval of the bi-monthly bills for May two thousand and eighteen, approval of resignations and retirements of Judy Young, full-time elementary special, special education teacher, Alex Porcher, that's seven and a half hour special ed para, Heather Stolfo, middle school girls basketball coach. Approval of appointments and contract modifications, Heather Stolfo, middle school volleyball coach, Lonika Barbie, full-time middle school special education teacher. Tanny Mirth is our middle school girls basketball coach. Becky Dillon, uh, Dillian, assistant prom dance coach. Approval of curriculum modification request for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses, of which we have two part-time students. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, John second Kirk to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item up is our student enrollment update.
Students' seats stay steady, one thousand, six hundred and four students. And our virtual charter school is now over, tipped the century mark at one oh four.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the student enrollment update? Okay, uh, next item on the agenda then is our key words. Our school board, starting with student, staff and community recognition.
Board recognitions for this month. To Tyler Olson, congratulations Tyler for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. To Brian Peterson, thank you for a great job maintaining our buses and receiving another great bus inspection report. To Bill Lemery, thank you for stretching the imagination of our outdoor adventure students. Your willingness to take the risk of exploration is admirable and certainly leads to great memories for all. A thank you to Logan Kimberly for leading the NHS selection and presentation processes. We appreciate his continued support for the young men and women and, and for modeling the four pillars of National Honor Society beautifully. A thank you to Garrett Wenzel and to Courtney Hawkins for leading us to the Brick Oven Project. This type of vision makes SCC special. They were collaborating to make this project a reality. And of course, we do look to, forward to many delicious pizzas that you and your students will make. And perhaps Kirk, when the time is, uh, Kirk, when the time is right, we may need to have a demonstration of that at a board meeting. Just a suggestion. To Cayman Flanders, a thank you for leading our at-risk population. His guidance, encouragement and modeling have allowed one hundred percent of the students to experience hope and a vision for their future. A thank you to Glenn Webb, thank you Glenn for your leadership with our staff and administration. Your willingness to serve others in a selfless manner is admirable and inspiring. Thank you for listening to our staff to create meaningful professional development days. To Nancy Rock, a thank you from the board for the generous donation to the female sports programs through her mother's estate. Your family's generosity will impact the lives of many Panther athletes to come. A thank you to Lindsay Jacobs, thank you for your first year of service at SCC. Yes, it's been a year, Lindsay. Our students and staff are fortunate to have a positive, hard-working, dedicated and competent person such as you in their daily lives at the elementary school. Thank you. A thank you to Mary Harmon, thank you for your commitment and dedication to long-term serving this year at the elementary school. We appreciate all that you do. A recognition to Tyler Miller, congratulations Tyler on serving as state officer for the FBLA. You're many leadership awards and qualifying for the National Leadership Conference. The next recognitions are to twelve students who earned a level one at the state solo and ensemble competition, to Catherine Morehouser for her trombone solo, Tyler Miller for a saxophone choir and exemplary performance in saxophone solo, to Anika Zim for her saxophone choir participation. Michaela Bringle, also in the saxophone choir with Grace Hanson, Savannah Bodish and Sarah Nihus and Peyton Timmerman. To Chris Harney for his bass solo musical theater bass solo, tenor-tenor bass trio and soprano bass duet. To Robin Pfeiffer for her level one in soprano solo musical theater, soprano solo, soprano bass duet and recognition as best in sight at the district festival. And to Riley Hackworth for his participate, level one recognition. And his events were tenor, tenor, two tenor solos and a bass trio. And then, finally, in the music category, to Jared Tritz, also for his tenor-tenor bass trio work. Recognition to Jackie David, recognizing her participation in the state art competition, receiving the first place on her onsite and long-term. Recognition to Jackie David, uh, recognizing her participation in the state art competition, receiving the first place on her onsite and long-term projects. A recognition to Sarah Nihus, recognizing her participation in the state art competition, receiving a first place on her onsite project and second place on her long-term project. To Anika Zee, congratulation, uh, the, there are six students that have all received gold medals and perfect scores at the state forensic competition. And they are Anika Zee, Ellie Fraser, JD Larson, Nicole Hetlevad, Emily Davenport, and Robin Pfeifer. So those are the board recognitions for this month.
Thank you, John. Um, thank you to all the students, staff. Thank you for those that have, uh, submitted, uh, recognition and thank yous. Cause we had quite a few of them this month, uh, some of them, I think, uh, we had, I don't know if we wanna go into what constitutes recognition or continue as such.
Uh, I think it's just always a good reminder that we want to recognize, um, students, staff, or, uh, community members that, uh, have a special impact, uh, on the district. And so, a- as you can see in these, we were, uh, recognizing top achievements. Several, several students went to state solo and ensemble contest. Uh, we were recognizing the, the very best of the very best. And, um, um, so if we're finding ourselves writing the same comment for, you know, twenty people, it's probably not that special, specific recognition for an event or an accomplishment that, uh, would equal, uh, a board recognition. So a reminder, specific acknowledgement of an event or recognition of a contribution or accomplishment are really the things that we wanna continue to call out, um, within, within these board recognitions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments there? Okay. So thank you all for submitting those. Uh, thank you Pam for filling all that stuff out, so. Okay, moving on to the next item is approval of the, uh, resolution regarding standards-based assessment and reporting. I know we did some rework on it and, uh, hopefully everybody got a chance to look that over.
So, um, took the edits that you made, suggested edits, Pam and I worked on it. Uh, one thing we did is we renumbered one through five in what you thought was priority order. Um, and then, um, number three, you know, my notes just kinda said something like timeline, you know, or, and so, you know, those are more my words than any specific words that evening, so please, uh, appreciate any feedback if, if you think there's, um, a better way of saying that.
Number three?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought it, it read very well. It recognizes there's two parts to it. One is, we will move forward and that is a process that requires vetting.
When we're ready, kind of, I try to say that, okay.
But that we as a board stand in support of this work and the ultimate outcome of moving to this. That's how I read it.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, and I would entertain a motion to adopt this, uh, resolution as presented.
So.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, John, second Scott, to adopt this, uh, resolution regarding standards-based assessment and reporting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, si-signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is consideration of approval of revisions to the teacher alternative compensation model for two thousand eighteen nineteen affecting the contracts of two thousand nineteen twenty. Is there anything there?
Yeah, so Howard, uh, the recommendation of the committee is to not make a recommendation to the board this evening. There is ongoing discussion about balancing the credit model with a, some level of increase for all. Um, and, and so, uh, there are still emerging ideas and balance. And so, we as a committee would ask to take some additional time. Tim's agreed to, uh, send an email to the, uh, teacher staff, right? Because this is who's it impacting, um, explaining that, uh, we, we will take more time to vet this. The committee, uh, which includes many from our teaching staff, have agreed to, um, a rigorous meeting schedule. And, um, we will at least give a, a significant progress report next month on it.
Sounds good to me. To me, it's more important to get it right than to get it fast, so. Okay, well, I'll, I'll let the, uh, committee and administration, uh, continue their work on this and thank them for their hard work. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of the recommended lunch prices for two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
So, if you look at exhibit fourteen, B and C labeled at the top, two thousand eighteen nineteen student fees, you can see that we're recommending to increase our lunch prices only by five cents per meal. Um, we will have some increased costs next year for course labor and our chart rolls contract, um, increases each year as well as food prices continue to go up. But we felt that we have been in a pretty good position over the last couple years. So five cents should be able to cover most of the increased costs that we're expecting.
Can we're able to maintain, uh, the equipment? Or replace the equipment as necessary? There's enough money set aside in that fund to cover that?
Yes, we have a pretty healthy fund balance at this point, so if there are equipment needs, we would be able to manage it through the fund balance.
It does keep us aligned with where we need to be with the federal expectations?
The price equity calculator indicates that we should increase our meal prices by ten cents. But the state has put a new law in place that for next year only, two thousand eighteen nineteen, if you have a positive fund balance in food service, you do not have to follow the price equity calculator. So it is recommending ten cents, of course, to get up to what the federal government want, where the federal government wants us to be at. But the state has said that we do not have to follow that.
That's a good thing for families.
That's a good thing for families.
Okay. Okay. Is there any questions with regards to the lunch and breakfast fees? Yes, recommended lunch prices. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the, uh, recommended, uh, lunch price increases for two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Second.
Now, motion Kirk, second David, to adopt the recommended lunch price increases for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next item has to do with, uh, recommended student fees for the eighteen nineteen school year.
So we have three changes that we're recommending, um, for two thousand eighteen nineteen as far as fees go. The first one is, is we remove the driver's education fee because as we previously talked about, we will be contracting through WITC for that service and the students will be paying WITC directly for that. So we do not have that on our list. We have added two new fees. One is for an AP comparative government workbook at the high school. And another one is separating out a percussion fee also at the high school.
Okay, and what does a percussion fee cover? Not being banned.
The original intent?
I know. There's, there's, uh, annual maintenance on percussion equipment, sticks, mallets, drumheads, uh, routine maintenance on the equipment. And so, uh, I think the intent was to continue to have a, a maintenance fund because those are use items that routinely wear out. There's a finite lifespan to a drumstick, a mallet, a drumhead.
Okay, and all of those are school district only, uh, increments?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
In that room, there should be.
So.
Is there any? Then the driver's ed fee, I know it's off of here because they're gonna be paying the, do you know what the amount is? Has the amount changed that they're gonna have to be paying? Cause I'm sure that parents are gonna wanna know what the amount will be. It just, it's gonna be to somebody else, but.
Tim, do you rec, I know it was an invoice of twenty-five dollars.
I'm thinking about from three hundred to three fifty, if I remember correctly.
Was it fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Is that?
You're, you're, you're suggesting it should be on here just because it's an information.
Well, we maybe for sure have it something, or something else that maybe Kirk is gonna have for the kids when they come to the high school to know what their fees are gonna be. If they're gonna go through driver's ed, it's not something that they're gonna pay at the school, but they're still gonna have to pay it. They're gonna wanna know how much.
Yeah, there was organizational meeting with those kids. Uh, Bill hosted it. I was not there, but so that information was provided that way. Um, certainly could put it out there again.
It might be worth at least listing if we're gonna, you know, show parents the list of here's what the fees are, you know, that, that's gonna be the fee, but it's not gonna be the district kind of thing, just so they've got an idea.
Maybe a juvenile family newsletter could be, could repeat that again.
I guess just list the fee and make a note that it goes to, that it's payable to WITC in the district. WITC might have a flyer that could be included in a orientation pamphlet.
It would certainly help with some of the families' just budgeting for the fees that they're gonna have to.
Percussion fee, high school only, middle school and high school.
Yeah, this includes middle school fees as well.
No, is the percussion fee a middle school fee as well?
I don't think so.
High, high school only.
High school only.
And the AP comparative government one, is that what you mentioned? That, that's a consumable workbook the kids will get. They can write it and stuff, so that's why we're doing that.
And is there consideration for free and reduced? For any, I don't remember how does any of these fees work for?
For the athletic fees, we do have a consideration for free and reduced, but I believe not for any of the other.
I don't know if there's anything formal for the other ones, but I know at least two boys last year that we didn't have to pay their fees because they were on free lunch. I don't, I don't.
Usually it's case by case.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
For everything.
Jason, do we have instrument rental fee at the middle school? They're using a school-issued horn.
Don't know if that was established.
I thought they did.
Their, their student tenant, yes.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, um, that you consider the percussion fee across the board because there, it's just as consumable at the middle school as it is at the high school. And think about that, uh, when we have an instrument rental, you know, it's school equipment that then has to be maintained. And so, over the course of four years, the cost of maintaining a rented clarinet or bass saxophone, or, I mean, that, that barely covers the cost of just returning the instrument to, uh, for a new student to, to take on, similar with the percussion. I, I would, um, because there was no funding in that segment around the, the percussion equipment, it, it was a gap in what I think was the rental instrument policy or administrative guideline. And so, um, I would suggest you consider it for the middle school. You may want some feedback from, uh, Mrs. Hopkins or others, but, um, it is, it's a consumable that requires funding. Similar to renting an instrument.
So, when I did it, I set up a, a drum head rotation, an annual drum head rotation. So like, um, one, the smallest timpani head would cost a hundred and fifty dollars just alone, that one timpani head. So that's, I don't know, could be a quarter of your percussion fee right there. And you have to buy them all sticks every year because they break them. It's just, you, you, you do what you can with what you have, but you, I developed a rotation that we just.
Okay, do we have to bring this back for modifications or just adopt?
I would adopt it. I would just ask that the administration looks at it for the middle school. I don't know if all my peers do.
Okay, does that a motion, John?
Uh, move to accept as presented with the, um, second check on middle school percussion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion as second, approve the recommended, uh, student fees for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Uh, need appointment of a district representative for the WASB Legislative District, or Delegate Assembly. Uh, last year, representative was Jeff. I believe he's still going to be a member of the Policy and Resolutions Committee. So.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is, uh, de-designate Citizen State Bank of Roberts as the official depository for San Francisco Central School District.
Smoothed.
Do we have to do any more paperwork to allow for our, all of our accounts to be there or was that perpetual paperwork that we did? For the, to exceed the deposit limits when we went to them as our only bank, we had to do paperwork. Is that, is that perpetual paperwork or any?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, Kirk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion as second, uh, to designate Citizen State Bank as the official depository for San Francisco Central Schools. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next item is to designate New Richmond News as the official newspaper of San Francisco Central School District. Uh, I know there are some people, uh, that are not happy with some of the coverage we've been getting with San Francisco Central News as of late. Is there any feeling by any board members that, uh, we need to reconsider that? Or, uh, feel that we've been treated unfairly? Or do we not designate anybody?
What are our options?
Was the original designation, is this a normal time for it? That was a, that was a, just a stopgap?
This is an unofficial one at full check.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I would ask the board to consider perhaps tabling this for a closed session discussion if, if you feel it warrants more discussion.
I think it warrants discussion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know what our suite of options are.
Oh.
Okay.
Um. I would say table it.
Yeah, and we could come with, we could come, I don't know the answer, perhaps Pam, you do to our, what satisfies our class to.
I do think we have a designated newspaper.
We do have to.
For notices and things like that.
And we do have another option.
Okay, cause I don't know if they, the state gave us any leeway. I know that some of the municipalities, um, such as villages and, uh, towns got, uh, an exemption, exemption of not having a name in official paper, I believe, because they could publish it on their website. I don't know if that exception extends to school districts or not.
Because I don't know what our options are.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're about to close next meeting.
Okay. Okay, then we will table that, uh, at this time. Uh, the next discussion is selection of board members to serve on committees for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. I know we've had a new member, uh, elected to the board. Had some discussion as to whether, uh, we should have her on the teacher negotiation committee or in the support. we should have her on the teacher negotiation committee or in the support staff. I think the general feeling I got from the board is we should probably put her on the support staff, uh, negotiation committee at this time. I think, uh, I don't want to put her in a, being a former teacher. I don't want to put her into a position where she's uncomfortable and we're going to deal with some of the issues that we're having to deal with, uh, at this time. Whether that's legitimate or not concerned, I guess I'm interested hearing from the rest of the board members. With that, we would need a person, um, to move to the, uh, teacher meet, uh, teacher negotiation committee.
Yeah, and actually, it's the teacher wage and benefits. So there's a, uh, I don't know, more frequent routine thing to that meeting than, uh, the rest of the staff.
In light of today's meeting, we're, we anticipate meeting quite often in the next month or so, yeah, weekly probably.
Did Trish weigh in with you, Howard? I thought that she was going to share her preference. It looked like she was open to either.
Yeah, I think, I think in talking with her, I think she was more comfortable, uh, moving to the support staff at this time. I think she realizes that, uh, maybe.
Recent proximity to peers.
So.
Sure.
So then we would look, I, I know I talked to you Kirk, and I've talked to David and, uh, Scott. Since we would need one of you probably to go to the committee. Uh, I know times of the meetings for the teachers tend to be.
Four thirty.
Four thirty-ish. So I don't know if that would weigh into.
It's a, it's a possibility.
Well, it, it could cause problems at certain, at certain times of a meeting.
Yeah, we typically meet the third Monday in front of the board meeting. However, we just spit off a, a pile of meetings to get to solution. And so, I think we said weekly today until we got it done, and so, yeah. We've done it with two out of three, but it's, it's good when three out of three are there.
I can, I can make every attempt. I just can't guarantee.
I can guarantee that I wouldn't. Okay.
Open the, I guess, most of the other capacities.
What is, what is your preference, David?
I honestly don't have.
Can you make it to the, to a?
Yeah, the, the early morning stuff is what I just can't do. But the, you know, the opening for breakfast and whatnot, I just, I can't usually get that stuff. This stuff is not as big of a deal for me to get in the afternoon. I only work at Hudson. I live in Roberts. You know, the afternoon stuff is relatively easy.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest that we, um, work it with David coming across to wage and benefit. Trish, go on to, uh, confer with Scott and Kirk and give it a go. There's nothing that says we can't shift it up when we need to.
I don't know if it makes a difference. Well, you said it's usually Mondays, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good time for whoever the new person is to bring a fresh perspective. I think that would be, we're kind of at an impasse, recent things, so I think I look forward to whoever it is, the new perspective being helpful.
Okay. So is that acceptable, everybody? Okay with you Kirk? Okay. And, uh, with that, then we will have, uh, Jeff, John, and David on the teacher negotiation wage and benefits. And Kirk, Scott, and Tricia on the support staff, uh, wage and benefits.
Want to kind of roll that in immediately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next one.
Pam, could I get a list of the meetings that John and Jeff are going to for the?
You will tomorrow.
You want minutes?
Uh, it would probably help.
They're on the website.
You know, I was going to say, if there are websites I can get to them, but I'll need like the schedule of the upcoming meetings.
Sure, I'll, you want the calendar invite?
Perfect. Yep, okay.
Fine, who'd you on here?
Yep, right, thank you.
You're back.
It would be helpful if we had a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, John, second Kirk, to approve the, uh, selection of the committees. As presented. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is the proposed, uh, meeting date schedule for the two thousand eighteen nineteen year. Pam sent me this list, uh, last week. I asked, originally, we had regular meetings on the seventeenth of September. And the twenty-first of January. I asked that those meetings be moved, uh, mainly because the seventeenth is, uh, back-to-back with our board learning meeting. And I think it's earlier, earlier enough in the month yet. I don't know that all the bills have yet arrived. So I was wondering if we could push that meeting back to the twenty-fourth, which would be the fourth, uh, Monday. That would probably back-to-back the meeting with the board learning on the first.